Good morning. June 3rd, 9:30 a.m. This is a meeting of the Griggs County Commission. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A roll call. Avriel.
Here.
Tranby.
Here.
You've reached Rod Zorn.
Edlin.
Here.
Wakefield's here and we're waiting on Zorn.
I have you on speaker.
Thank you.
You're the last in a roll call. Rod, Zorn.
Here.
Very good. All present. Let's have a look at the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Edlin to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Avriel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Agenda approved. Let's have a look at the May 20th meeting minutes to start with.
Good morning.
I make a motion to accept the minutes and dispense the reading.
We have a motion on the floor by Edlin to accept the May 20th meeting minutes in dispense with the reading. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Tranby. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. May 20th meeting minutes approved. You'll have a look at the May 22nd minutes now. Same process if possible.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion by Tranby to approve the May 22nd meeting minutes as presented and dispense with the reading. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Avriel. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. May 22nd meeting minutes approved. Have a look at the bills.
We do have one. If we could get this added. Amber has $100 for the postboard license for herself. And that'll come out of sheriff training and equipment. The only other thing with the bills is there is one for election system and software. And it's taking my election printing expense under or over by 3,000. It's not. You guys have it budgeted for within, I just put it on, you guys just budget on a dollar amount for election. I break it out into the individual. So you're good. It's not over.
I'll make a motion to accept the invoices, including the new addition from Amberly for Griggs County.
Postboard.
For training.
For training. Sorry about that.
We have a motion by Edlin to approve the bills as presented with the addition of sheriff's office training and equipment for the postboard license, $100. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Zorn. Any further discussion on the bills? Marry, no further discussion. We'll move on to a voice vote. Aye in the positive, nay to the negative. Avriel.
Aye.
Tranby.
Aye.
Zorn.
Aye.
Edlin.
Aye.
Wakefield votes aye. Bill's approved.
Why is this not going through? Not good. That's what it is.
We need to stop or what are we doing?
Nope, you're good. I'll just get them on my laptop.
Fair board, are they here or is that later?
They are not here.
Okay. Let's jump forward to the sheriff's office update. Sheriff Michaelis.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so I could potentially hire two deputies here right away. I know that we have only budgeting for one. So it's, I'm just asking you guys if there's a possibility we could get that second one in and be fully staffed, not have to worry about overtime, anyone coming in from the outside. They're both local people. I would probably don't want to blast their names here because they've got jobs and obligations.
No, that's separate. That's yours. Of course, once it happens, yeah.
Okay.
What, how much are you needing total to your, to bring these two in?
Well, the, from what I understand, the chief deputy position money is gone. And that's at 57,200. This person did ask, and I'm with, I'm on board with it, to ask for 60 to cover some of the health insurance. That was 1,100 a month. 1,100. And then the chief deputy, or the normal deputy is at 55,120. And it looks like there's enough in there to cover the rest of the year for that. So that one should be good.
So you just need 60, not just, but you need 60,000 to have full staff?
Yeah.
Well, I know they were talking, they're gonna look and do see if they can send that. I guess the cameras and T's.
I called them. They can't send them back. Only option was to pay him out in five years.
But even if you had to pay it out in five years, that would at least give you some income back in the budget. If we, if they're allowing us to make payments on it, that will give us some time to be able to put, not take all of the budget at once. You know what I mean?
So if we made the first payment?
How much should, yeah.
It was 12,000.
Is that, so would that work with your budget then?
If we could use the 15,000 that was put aside for the school resource officer, that could go with that. And then it would be good.
Okay. So what's my number?
The school resource officer, let me, I gotta refresh myself here.
So with the school resource officer, you had that revenue and that expense within the budget, but we didn't have anything put in, so it went into the general fund.
Yeah, so that's not a part of the sheriff's.
But there is 15,000 left within the sheriff's department budget. That was the excess of that resource officer.
So that.
Over and above the, so it was canceling out the.
What put the, what put the money there?
You did.
No, but where did the revenue come from for the resource?
The revenue, so the, the revenue and the expense went into the general fund.
I know, but where, the revenue was gonna come from the school, which never, which didn't happen.
Right.
So there's no money there. Without the revenue, there is no, there is no.
Yep, so then to offset, but there was 15,000 over and above the revenue for that officer.
That was levied?
That was put into the sheriff's department budget.
Where?
If you look at the sheriff's department.
Yeah, I got it.
This, um, you've got a different one than I knew.
I mean, I know that within the sheriff's budget, it was allocated, we were gonna allocate some there, but it wasn't revenue that came in. It's not over and above what's been budgeted here.
No, so, okay. I'll show you what I have.
That was dependent on this, on the school.
Yep, yep. But the school was gonna pay like 40, or.
45,000, isn't it?
Was it 40,000? So then we had another 14 or 15 for that deputy.
Oh. I see. We had the budget, we budgeted 15,000 for that. We did, we put it in.
We budgeted an additional 15,000, is what you're saying.
Yep, yep.
But that was supposed to be for the school resource officer.
Where is that?
Right here.
No, 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 no. It, it has to be the budget. That, that's, that's not the budget.
11,000.
And thus I've got the wrong budget here.
This is what Sam, if you look at the monthly email, the monthly email of all of the stuff that she sends us.
I know, but that, that's just a.
No, I'm sorry, this one. Uh, this one.
It has to be budgeted somewhere. What she sent you there, it might be for the sheriff's department, but the money had, it has to be budgeted somewhere else because it's not budgeted here.
This 15.
Right. Deputy two, it's 55.
Yeah, so then you guys made the change and you guys took 40 of it and put it within the general fund with that income too, so that he couldn't use it, but left 15 in here.
I know, but she's gonna use it for the deputy now. The 50, the 55.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
So we can't use it twice. It's 55 here, if you take, if you took 15 off of it, then it's only 40.
Well, she's got 55,000 under the sheriff deputy and then she has, we have two deputy lines. One's for 55, one 20, and the other one's for 15.
How much is in this one?
The deputy two?
There's deputy one, there's, the chief deputy's gone. Although that could be, that could come back to the tune of $45,000 basically, correct?
It's not fully gone, is it? Because it's 50, the budget was 57,000. We used how much for the?
We used 30.
12? 30 something.
50. Because it was, it was 30 something for the.
It was actually.
Jammer's and stuff, and then another 20.
Installation and all the rest of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to move that to payments. That'd be handy if you do that, pay that out in five years.
So what is this, this 421115, 15,000? Or 14,685 is left.
Say that again.
Wait, what is this one for? This is, this guy right here. What, what is that?
Yep, that's the null scene of mine too.
It's, it's not there. You have to look at the actual budget that was approved.
But this is, but the budget that's approved gets put into the software like this.
No, no, it doesn't. Evidently, but not correctly.
The budget number. So it says, it says budget.
Yep, I know that. But this 15,000 isn't reflected anywhere here.
It, no, it is. So at the end.
I don't know.
At the end, you guys put, you guys took out 40,000 of this, but left 15 in here. So that, so 40 of that went into the general fund.
So you don't have an updated budget spreadsheet?
So this should say 15.
15. Yep, and then, and then 40,000 of it went into the general fund because we didn't have.
Yeah, but the budget line said 15,000.
It says, it says 55, so that's not, so that, that, yeah, this on the actual budget said 55.
Would that've been nice? Why didn't you leave out that?
Because you brought it up.
[laughing]
Because I didn't know any better until you brought it up. So now where's the 40, the 40 go?
In the general courthouse, because it was the, we didn't get, we had the 40,000 for income and then the 40,000 for expense, but we didn't have, it was contingent on using that if we got the revenue.
Could we put that from general courthouse back into the sheriff's department?
Well, we don't have the revenue.
We don't have the revenue.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
It was on the con.
Oh, yes.
It was, it was based on the contract itself.
Right.
Which was never.
Never signed off on.
Okay.
So we just, that additional 15,000 is the one we put on there and it's still in there.
The 15, the 15 is over and above for that officer than what the school was gonna contribute.
So Amberly, so we have 57,200. And what is the payment gonna be for the equipment?
12 something.
Our first one.
I thought we made that already.
You've made the payments alright, or you already purchased it.
For the first year's payment.
Same for.
And none of the payments have been made yet.
Yes, they have.
We paid it in full.
We paid it in full. So were they gonna refund it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Total amount, 56,430.
Okay, so that, that doesn't, that doesn't make much difference. So subtract 11,280 from the 57,200.
Hmm.
And then that's what's, that's what's left available in this budget. So it'd be 47, 47,000, 46,960, correct?
What the second deputy is.
I had to use a ten key, but you had, you had math. I had to use a ten key.
Okay.
What was it, 46?
I think, I think 40, 45,960, I believe. 11,280 minus 57,200. Is that what it is?
What's my number again?
57,200 minus 11,280.
45,920.
Hmm. Okay, that's what it is. So now.
Unless you did what, like, she was saying she wanted to take that 11,000 out of that 15,000.
Well, either way, whether you.
Well, we, we have to put it back into the chief deputy's salary. So, so if we're only gonna pay 11,280 of coming out of that chief deputy's salary, that's what's left.
Right.
So now you have, what was that number?
46, 46, 45,920.
Almost 46,000.
45,920.
So now you have 45,920 plus the 15,000, that gives you 60, 920, right?
Yeah.
And then you have the 55,120 for the other deputy, you should be good.
Jamie, can you hear me?
Correct.
And then you'll still use the cameras and everything else too, won't you?
Yeah.
Obviously, you know, we wanna get you more, which, I don't know, with the next budget, but.
Talk about this for five minutes, we're like, oh crap, this call.
Sure.
So put that on paper, so we got that down, but that can cover again, right? The 60,000.
And the deputy's salary. And we're looking at, I mean, are you gonna use that all up, being that we're halfway?
We're already in June, no. I was just gonna ask, but still.
Yeah, we are. You're, you're the math.
I know. Welcome to Zoom. Please press enter.
Because I mean, you're hiring both deputies halfway through, so you shouldn't be, you shouldn't burn those up.
Okay, so here's, here's the only difference is that, that some of it is already used, you know, through the year. So of that whole entire year budget, we only have so much left.
Yeah.
Correct, that's right. The chief deputy has been used up, but you still have that other deputy plus that 15,000.
Well, that 15,000.
Because we, we raised it for three different police officers, right?
Correct.
The sheriff and two deputies.
Yeah.
And we've only used up one income of one deputy. Well, half, halfway through that anyways.
Are we, I'm looking at me as, but, I'm looking at, I think this is from me, the budget from me.
Okay.
Or the, so is the current, is the current, so this shouldn't be, shouldn't be any different, I guess. You're right. Never mind. I'm talking to myself now.
Okay. So can we move on from this and have, Amberly, can you put this into revise that budget so we know what we're looking at? And then a little bit later in the meeting, we can go ahead and approve it, because it looks like it should work, right? You needed 60 for.
The meeting passcode.
60 for the chief deputy, and you needed 55, what you've got for the other deputy.
Mm-hmm.
And that should be here. We're still gonna be faced with some terrible budget problems because of overspending prior to you taking over this budget. There's some big, there's some big shortfalls here, again.
We're also halfway through the season, so I think that's gonna save her a little bit of money too.
No.
I won't.
It's, it's already overspend, we've already spent about 70.
No, but what I'm saying is, is she's hiring somebody halfway through the season.
Oh, that, you're right.
She won't go through that. So she'll have, she might have some money left over from the end of the year to help cover some of that up.
Except that the budget's already, about, total budget is about 75% spent and we're only, and we're only 50% through the, the year, correct?
It's spent.
Yeah. Nothing to do with you, but that, so we're already faced with the same thing here when you, no matter where it comes from, there's been more money spent than should have been spent to date in the combination of all this budget. That's nothing we can fix right now.
Okay.
Although we're gonna fix last year's here pretty soon.
I don't. So if we bring that, just to, I have to talk this out loud. If we make the payment of that 11,280, that will bring her budget back to be able to cover her two deputies?
Okay, so just, if, this, this is what's been spent.
Yep.
This is what you gotta start looking at, is the actual budget. This is available. So here we got 57,200.
Yep.
Okay, bring that, so now we're gonna spend 11,280 out of that.
Okay, yep, oops, sorry.
Now that reduces that value to 45,920.
Okay, 45,000, yep.
And then you add in the 15,000 that we had for the deputy two, which was gonna be the resource officer.
Mm-hmm.
To the 45, that gives you 60,920. She was asking for 60,000. That covers that. Now we got that covered.
Okay.
The 55,120's never been touched. Or whatever's left of that hasn't been touched.
Yeah, she's got 36,000 left of it, yep.
That will cover the deputy as Josh said, for going, going forward here.
Oh.
So it should be, so it should be covered.
Oh, excellent. Okay. You got yourself two deputies and you're good to go with that. That makes sense.
Well, but, so if you can put that, if you can revise this budget for us accordingly, and then we can approve it, so we have something to, or Sam can.
So what? Anyway, so if you get a full staff, we should be able to cut down on overtime, correct?
Yeah.
There won't be any overtime.
That's what I mean, that's what I'm saying. That's my point here.
We're not, we don't need anyone in, no help, no.
And you still have $6,000 in overtime budget left for the year. And I say that, it's, it's June, so you have six months to do for that.
Yeah, no, we, we should, we'll be good.
Yeah.
Excellent.
No pollinators, people, no extra people out there, no, back to normal. We can leave, you guys won't, you guys can leave us alone. We won't be a bother, I promise.
We need some.
Well, back to normal is kinda subjective, because normal, it hasn't been normal for a long time here.
No, you won't, you won't.
I got it, I got it.
Just do our thing.
Got it, got it. Okay, so, so tentatively, we should be good with that. That should handle it. Now we're just looking at putting this to, on paper. I guess if Sam's gonna do it, we could approve it now. So we're, what we're doing is, we're going to move the radios, excuse me, move the video and taser equipment into a.
Separate one of them.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's going to be, well, no, it's just coming out of this year, so we'll have to budget for it, no, next year.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to take 11,280 off of the chief deputy's budget amount. Then we're going to move the deputy two salary, which was the, to do with the school, into that sheriff's deputy amount. That's gonna give us a balance of 60,2920. And that is gonna be then for Amberly's use in hiring a new chief deputy. The remaining balance of the deputy one will be used to hire another deputy one, and then the budget should go forward from there. We'll need a motion to that effect.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Avriel, as stated. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Tranby. Voice voting is Avriel.
Aye.
Tranby.
Aye.
Zorn.
Aye.
Edlin.
Aye.
Wakefield votes aye. Budget amended. We won't need anything else. You'll get the amended budget, Amberly, and she can go forward.
Yes.
Thank you. You guys won't hear from us anymore. Consider us.
No, you're, we're, we're fine.
No, we appreciate the updates. At least we know what's going on.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
That's the first painless encounter we've had with the sheriff's department in a long time. Very good.
Do we have to do hers still though, her new salary? Do you need to amend the budget for that?
No, because I thought the agreement was, is as soon as she hires somebody, she will go back to 75.
That's gonna have to be, yeah.
Which, is that high, that's higher than what?
68, or 68 a year.
Okay.
So that'll, the next meeting, that should all, as Sam gets his budget arranged, it should all.
Oh, you'll add that in there and then we can?
It won't have to get added into there. It's gonna go back. There's just gonna be a payment come out for, for the time that she was by herself. Or it's gonna be prorated, prorated to that time, and then it'll go back to the salary.
But it's over what herself.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Her salary is larger than what we budgeted for.
It is, but we need to get the, when, when we already, we already approved that tentatively, but we have to get the rest of the budget so we know how much money is left. And then we will make one budget amendment in order to cover everything and to get it back where it's supposed to be.
And then too, that's make sure before we make any major, major changes too, we'll have to, I mean, I'm not saying she's not gonna hire him, but we'll have to make sure she gets the officers too, because that'll definitely be a final deal too.
Well, that doesn't matter, because, because if she doesn't get the officers, money not spent, we don't have to do nothing with it. It just rolls back into the budget. It's, it's only money that's spent over and above that needs to be dealt with.
Okay.
Got it, Sam?
Right, you're good.
Fair board, no?
Yeah. At 10 o'clock, you have your tax equalization though.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to recess the Griggs County Commission meeting at this point.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Tranby to move into recess. Second?
I'll second that.
Second by Zorn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, uh, meeting re, Griggs County Tax Equalization Board. I'll take roll call, Avril.
Here.
Tranby.
Here.
Zorn.
Aye.
Edlund.
Here.
Wakefield, present. This is my cell phone. There, well, we'll move in, move into the tax equalization, it's pages twenty, twenty-one, it looks like everything has been pretty well, uh, laid out. If you wanna look at it here, there's, uh, you'll see what was done by each one of the cities and the townships, and then you will see the treasurers, or that the auditors',um, suggestion accepted submitted?
Uh, treasurers, she did up that for you.
Yeah. So as we've, as we've discussed before, that this Griggs County has no assessed property that this board assesses. Some counties do, some counties have property that, that the county commissioners assess, we don't. Townships and, townships and cities, right?
Correct.
So we just go off of their values, basically, or what?
They're, they're the primary, they're the primary assessing, and, and it's always been that way, it always should be that way. There is no reason for us to, to tell them what the values they set are right or wrong, because they're the ones that are, they're the ones closest to the...
Property.
Property.
We have to make a motion to accept it, right? I make a motion to, oh, you, you do them all at once, right?
We, we can do them all at once, because we have zero, we have the same, we have the same...
Okay.
Same budget type, or same approval?
We've been given accept as submitted for all of them.
Sure.
So we don't have, we can take them all at once.
Absolutely. I make that motion to accept all of the recommendations from the...
Equalization boards.
Equalization board.
Yeah. We have a motion by Edlund to accept the recommendations and the values put forward by the various township and city equalization boards in Griggs County. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Second by Zorn, any discussion on this? Any discussion? Are there no further discussion, we'll move on to a roll call vote, and yes, aye to the positive, nay to the negative, Avril?
Aye.
Tranby?
Aye.
Zorn?
Aye.
Edlund?
Aye.
Wakefield votes aye.
I made a motion to re, to close it out, correct?
The, the motion to, to accept the valuations as put forward has been accepted. We'll now need a motion to move into recess of the equalization board.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Tranby to move into recess of the equalization board, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, second by Avril, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, in recess. We'll now re, we'll now reconvene to meet the, uh, Griggs County... Meeting, um, let's see, where were we at? We were down to Road Superintendent Wayne when we went away.
I will really push my time to Travis, because Paul Bjornson's on the way.
Okay.
He wants to talk.
So now we have a backup server that went down evidently.
Yep, the offsite backup system, uh, failed here recently, so, looking at getting this approval, to get that replaced then. It wasn't budgeted, um, we did request it, but it was one of those items that was removed.
How much was it?
Uh, sixty-eight hundred about, sixty-eight hundred. Once we get it pulled back from the actual manufacturer, I mean, it should be under that, sixty-eight hundred is to make sure we're covering. Obviously, since it's not in the budget, we can't, can't spend any money to get approval.
We got anything in, please, whether we can... Take that from Sam that you think we don't need, or that we budgeted for, that we're not to be used?
You have a reserve within the general fund, that's...
So to move that from the general fund into his, into the, not your budget, into the IT budget? Do you need to first make a motion to amend the budget? Is that how that works, I forget every time?
Or do you want a final price after we get...
Yes, please.
You've been asked to get a final price, yeah.
Yes.
If I get, if I can get approval to actually order it, and I get it moving, let me get you a final price.
Is there a tentative, is there a tentative of some guidelines on what the price would be?
That's what I'm saying, no more than sixty-eight.
Oh, that's a, that's a...
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm, and so I, I'm sure we do it for less than that. I just wanna make sure we're covering, um, based on the NSRP price, I know we'll get a discount from that, so it's, it's not gonna be more than sixty-eight.
Um, if you so desire, we'll need a motion, uh, to allow Travis to order the new backup server not to exceed sixty-eight hundred dollars.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Avril, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Edlund, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, Travis?
Yes, appreciate it.
Thank you for fixing it.
Have a good day, and I'll let Samantha know when it's back up again, and we'll get everything going, so.
Thank you.
Budget amendments, as long as we're playing with money we don't have.
So, you could do it today, or you could do it your next meeting, when I bring you the budget, so you guys can kinda see, because I put all these numbers in there. The ones that were over budget was the new courthouse, uh, clerk of court and VSO, um, new courthouse tax increase was negative twenty-five thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-six cents, um, clerk of court was negative fifty-five thousand. Um, the reason that the clerk of court is negative is because the contract money doesn't go into that budget, so it goes within the general fund, and then I can transfer it into there through the budget process. And then VSO was negative two, two hundred and six dollars and forty cents.
That's veteran service, or is it, right?
Excuse me?
B, BSO is veterans?
Yep, 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 sorry.
Those are all within the general fund.
Yeah.
But how about the sheriff, how about, no, the, those are, excuse me, those are all within the, the...
Special.
C.
Yep, yep. So then your general fund came in under budget by four hundred and eighty-three thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. So, you don't really have to amend the budget, because they are within the general fund, the general fund wasn't over, so you're good.
No, no, we have to, we have to amend the specific budgets within the general fund. The general fund is, is a pool of money.
Mm-hmm.
But each individual budget doesn't have the ability to pull money out of that pool without appro, without budget approval.
Right.
So we have to amend, I know for one, the sheriff's budget has to be amended. Yeah, the sheriff's budget has to be amended.
So you want, you want to amend the individual little ones within the general fund, not just the general fund in itself, because the general fund is...
You have, you have to, otherwise there would be no need, there would be no use for a budget, for a sheriff's budget, an auditor's budget, a treasurer's budget, none of that. The budgets are in place so that you can allocate the money, the general fund is a pool of the money.
Right.
I think that's kinda county preference, that they want to do individual ones, or since you're all generally over, we're still under...
No, no, the statute spells out, plain and simple, each department has to submit a budget, and it's under the general budget, because that's the appro, that's the approval, the, the county commission has the approval to levy money against the general budget.
Sure, sure.
So I can get you guys the individual?
So you're right, so the same, the same as when, at the end of the year, good.
Yeah, so what, how much are we talking for the sheriff, how much?
We don't, I, I think about sixty-two, three thousand.
It was six, it was under, um, over budget, or under budgeted fifty-five thousand.
Okay. So we're looking at, right in that range to fix it, in other words. What you wanna do is you wanna try and take it to the general fund, amend it into that place.
You want approval to try for the money basis, what you want.
Off the general fund into the sheriff's budget, is that what you wanna do, John?
Okay, so, let's, let's think of this in, in the, in the sense of we have a pool of money here.
Correct.
And then, that pool of money is the result of all these individual budgets. And so now when Sam's saying when we got done with the end of the year, and she added up all these individual budgets, it spent four hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars less than this pool. Now this pool of money isn't free money that, that, it's just not Christmas time, this pool of money now goes over here and moves into the next year to offset levy there. So, money was overspent, when it's overspent, it's overspent, and that's going to cause now that sixty thousand dollars less money in the following year. But if we have to, yes it is.
But the pool is still, the pool, the ending pool is still the, is the starting minus all of the expenses, and we had four hundred and some thousand dollars left over, that dollar goes into the next year, regardless of the individual departments being over, because some were under, correct?
We were supposed to have five hundred, we were supposed to have five hundred and eighteen thousand dollars left over, we overspent by sixty thousand dollars in the sheriff's department.
Okay. But we still, the same dollar amount, regardless of what we do now, the same dollar amount of four hundred and, whatever, four hundred thousand, is going to move over to the new year.
Yes, but, but it's been, it was overspent, it should have been sixty thousand dollars higher to move over.
So now it's going to offset, so now we're going to, this number is then gonna go into the next year, that number is then gonna be the sixty thousand less, because we overspent it, now we need that more for the carryover.
Yeah.
Is what he's saying.
Yeah.
So that carryover number that I always take over, like...
Is sixty thousand dollars less.
But it doesn't, so right now, if you guys amend the budget, it's not going to make this number any higher or lower, it's just going to say, okay, the, the...
We're going to acknowledge the sheriff's department, each individual one.
We violated, we violated the budget when we allowed the check to be written way back when, that's when the budget started going over. This is just, that four fifty-eight is the end result of what we did.
Right, right.
So...
Amber's got one more thing to say.
I'm sorry, I forgot this, and I had it on my notes, um, the one deputy lives nine miles past the county line, so I need your guys' permission to allow her to, to drive her vehicle there.
Nine miles past, I make that motion?
Well, I mean, like, the gas bill, I mean, I, I'm not against it, but as, as, so how do we figure out that with the gas bill and the budget and all that, then? Is that all on you then?
We'll make it, we won't come over.
Okay. I mean, I, I'm...
So this is always, so we can she dictate the truck vehicle home, correct?
Which isn't a terrible idea, because she can always, on her way to work or whatever, always she might catch somebody.
Well, the problem is, is always time response, you know? If you just kinda cooperate the vehicle and then go to a call...
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that, trust me.
You're way behind April already.
That's why I get a company vehicle to go home, because the fact of it is, is if I have a call in Cooper, well, I can't drive all this valid to get the vehicle, go to Cooper, it makes no sense, so.
Right, right.
But, I mean, yeah, if, if you're making the motion, I'll second the motion.
Good, yep.
I'm good.
I, well, I, I, in, in theory, that's good, in, in practice, I don't know, um, there's, there's nothing that we have in writing authorizing the vehicles, the county vehicles to be used for personal use. That's just been a given, it's been, it's taken place, but I, I, we don't have, I don't know if we have the ability to do that, those are, I don't know if, if the vehicle can be classified as coming and going to work. Now it's been done that way, but no one said anything about it, no one has said about it, or, or we, we got to ask the state's attorney, it's Jamie here.
Yep, Jamie, are you on?
It's, well, then we gotta talk to insurance, see what our insurance says about that, or has it never been an issue?
No, I don't think that's an issue, it's, the issue is, is that, again, it's, that's always been done, but now when it's been brought out in the open, and it's going to another county, and, and, and it was stated for the purpose of coming and going to work, I don't know what the implications then are. Even though we might all agree on it, can we, is that...
Is it allowed?
Is that allowed, right?
Makes sense. You want me to try calling him?
No, he's, he's gonna have to research it anyway, he can't give you a, a direct. When does she start?
If we, can I...
Probably within a week.
Yeah, well, we can have a decision by then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. So we're on budget amendments, how are we gonna handle the, the gen, the general fund will know that, but we have to know the balance coming forward before we start this year's budget.
Every, all the numbers are in.
Okay.
I'm, I'm got, you are ready to go.
Okay, so now, so now this one is a... How did the tax courthouse get over?
Um, that was when we, um...
Okay, because the interest was paid, the, the interest payment was made, was made at a different time than the principal payment was made.
Yep. So that's just a tidbit that, let's remember that, so that we do budget a little bit higher each year, to kinda make up for that.
The, that happened because the payment, the courthouse payment was made, actually made in two different years, right? In two, two different budget cycles for one year.
I think so, because, yeah, it was...
Because the interest payment was made.
I have, I have this, the schedule, and I have those numbers in there, but then it's...
Because the interest payment was made, and then six months later than...
Right.
Right, so it fell into two different years, okay. And the clerk of court will work its way out?
That's because the revenue isn't going into that, it's coming into the general fund, because that budget used to be within the general fund, so it's still coming into the general fund, and then it needs to go into its own individual.
So that's gonna, have you made a, have you made, that's gonna in, decrease that general fund by fifty-five thousand dollars in the carryover, in order to fix this? This isn't fixed as of yet, correct?
Uh, correct, uh...
Right, so if it went into the general fund, and we have to put it back to the clerk of court, that four fifty-eight's gonna be reduced by fifty-five, five thousand four eleven eighty-two.
Let me make sure that I didn't do that, knowing...
Same holds true for the VSO officer, correct?
Um, the VSO overspent...
That's fine.
Yeah, but yeah, that's, that has to come out of somewhere.
Is that a part of the, no, I was gonna say is that part of the COVID funds, but I guess not.
No, I didn't transfer those numbers, because you guys need to give me authority to do that.
So, in the, in order to, in order for us to start a budget cycle, we need, we need to take care of this clerk of court transfer.
Okay.
So we'll need a motion, we'll need a motion to transfer fifty-five thousand four eleven eighty-two to the clerk of court from the general carryover of two thousand twenty-three, is that correct?
Yeah, because we're just, it's going in the wrong count, right? So we're just basically authorizing it to be transferred?
It's going into the general fund, yeah.
The money, the money is coming, this is money that's coming from the state, basically, and instead of being, instead of being put into the clerk of court, which is a, which is a C budget, it went into the general fund. It should have been a pass, it should have been a pass-through amount in the general, it should just come in and been distributed over to the clerk of court, that didn't happen, but it will happen going forward, I'm sure. Sam?
I hope so.
Okay. It don't, they don't have the ability to deposit it directly, no, because it comes in many different, that's, that's, this is a couple different payments.
Hmm, I think so.
Yeah, this just isn't the matching fund from the state for the clerk of court's position, this is fines and our percentage of all that.
I think so.
Yeah.
Jamie's on, if you wanna ask him questions, too.
No, you can, you can tell him what we... Jamie?
Oh, that's why.
Why?
Oh, for Pete's peppers, okay, talk, I'm sorry.
The math that you're muted.
I'm sorry, that was my deal.
Just hang on, Jamie, we, we got a question when we get this done here.
Okay. I'll make the motion to transfer from general funds over to clerk of court of fifty-five...
Four eleven eighty-two.
Four eleven eighty-two.
Eighty-two. Motion by Edlund to transfer fifty-five thousand four eleven eighty-two from the general fund, two thousand twenty-three general fund, to the two thousand twenty-three clerk of court budget, is there a second?
Second that one.
Second by Avril, we'll move on to a roll call vote, aye to the positive, nay to the nay, of Avril?
Aye.
Tranby?
Aye.
Zorn?
Aye.
Edlund?
Aye.
Wakefield votes aye, money transferred. So now that reduced the general fund balance to what, four oh three?
Yeah, something like that.
Four twenty-seven?
We're at four fifty, oh.
I thought it was four fifty-eight. Eventually.
We got four eighty-three written here, I don't know.
Four eighty-three, one eighty-four.
Four eighty-three, got it. Okay. So now, now we have, it was everything in place for the upcoming budget.
You should be good to go.
Okay, when windows come forward, okay.
And you guys will start budget talk next meeting? Aren't you so excited?
Yeah. So now we will amend the individual general fund budgets, then before we go into the next meeting, before we start the regular budget.
That's what you'd like to do.
That's what I'd like, oh, well, because we'll know what, what we have to amend. So you'll, you can make the, you can make the changes, so that all the general fund budgets are zero. And adding, adding the money in from, well, you don't have to add anything in, you just gotta make the changes.
Yep.
But you have to show the transfer.
Which transfer, this one, that we just did?
No, the transfer to the budget, because we overspent it, otherwise it's gonna show as an overspent budget.
Well, it, all of their, the things for how much they actually used is in there. is in there. So, like, everything that he actually spent is in here. But there's nowhere that I can go. It's not like the C fund, so it's not like I can put money in, so then that's where it's like in that general fund page, so, but the way that they actually spent it is in.
Is there, but so the budget is gonna reflect, is gonna have in parentheses a negative balance.
Um, I think that there's a spot on here to see that.
Well, we wanna make sure that it's, we wanna make sure that going forward, someone can look at it and see it was overspent. But for our, for our budget purposes, it's gonna, it's, it won't show a negative balance because it's part of the general fund, we start at zero.
Yep.
Okay, well, we can look at that, you, you know what we need to do.
So there's nowhere in here that says that it was overspent, it just says that the actual we, we actually spent two hundred and sixty four thousand.
So
So you'd have to look at what, you know, the budget was in twenty twenty three and then what was actually spent in twenty twenty three to see that it was overspent.
Yeah, okay, let me think about that. Uh, Jamie?
Yep.
So the sheriff had a request to allow the, a future deputy to use a patrol car to come and go from work um, outside of the county. What are the, what are the what are the options there?
Um, I, I guess I, I should have known this question was gonna come up, I I don't think that there's anything that would prohibit it from traveling, from her traveling to, to and from her home um, with the patrol car. Uh, the argument can be made that he's able to respond to calls on the north side of the county or actually any place in the county if she has a patrol car. Um, and if she didn't have that patrol car there, she would have to either run to the sheriff's office or wherever the patrol car is being kept. And need to use that patrol, need to get that patrol car at that time. So I really don't think that there is anything that prohibits it, and that would be up to the you as a commission to make that decision, um, whether you would allow that for the sheriff department, I guess.
So, yeah, we don't, a non-decision will just allow the sheriff to make that decision.
Yeah, like that.
Yeah.
We'll leave it on to the sheriff to make that decision.
Okay, that answered that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's anything, and that's, I'll, if I find determining anything to the contrary, I'll let, I'll let you know, but I don't think that there's anything that would prohibit that.
Okay. He'll pass that on.
Mm-hmm.
Very good. Wayne?
Yes. Mister Paul Bjornson is here from K L J and he's gonna report on that.
These are the memorandum of understanding in the packet there. Um, it was the same M O A that was previously approved except with a few minor changes. They corrected the bridge name from Decatur Bridge to Ramona's Bridge.
So
And that's what's on the site.
That was my question, okay, never mind.
So that matches the National Register of Historic Places form that was filled out and it's been on there for um, quite a while. Um, they also corrected where it said previously said eligible for listing, now it says listed in the National Register of Historic Places and that's, that is accurate. Incorrect before, so that was, I think, probably the main reason that he did it. Um, then they did change a couple of terms, though, um, paragraph one, they state the site update form. If changes are needed, must be submitted before the bridge removal, which is perfectly reasonable. And then paragraph three, they added a sentence stating that D O T E T S will submit the post-removal site form update with photographs, which doesn't affect us, but I mean, it's makes sense to clarify if you're just doing one. So there's, I mean, as far as the county goes, the only change that affects anything is that submitting the site update form before the removal, which done that anyway.
Okay.
So I guess I recommend approval with that.
So we'll need a motion allowing the county to enter into a memorandum of agreement between the state, uh, North Dakota, the Federal Highway Administration, Historical Society and the State Historical Preservation Office.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Yeah. Motion by Tranby, uh Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Edland, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Memorandum of agreement approved.
Thanks, guys.
What do I sign?
Um, I'll do it by
Bow, yep.
Yep, yeah, you can.
Fair board, nobody here.
It's, what happened?
I messaged them. Um, I messaged them, I don't know. Um, Jamie got together with their attorney and the contract that you have in front of you is in front of you, I guess.
So Jamie, did they make the adjustments that were suggested the first time it was re, revisited?
Yeah, well, we, we can't, we can't go forward with it, this with only one party here.
Looks like all paperwork is here, just they need to be here, correct?
Yeah, I mean, you can't enter
No, I know, I'm saying that.
Enter an agreement when there's no parties here.
In the building, can he come represent, cuz he's also on the fair board.
I don't know that.
We need to have whoever's, whoever is
Who, who is the president?
Need to, well, that's what we need, we need the president, we need the president.
Matt Hogan, can't remember who he is, it's a Jerry Ho, Ho, Charity.
Holhertz?
Yeah. I think Matt's on the board, I don't know what his position is.
Move this next meeting.
Yeah. Whatever.
The president needs to be here, it's actually scientists.
Is there a way you can reach out to him and just say, hey?
Well, I send them the, the meeting notice every week, like the
I know you do.
Yeah. And the last time I had it on, they said that they didn't have the right information, so it'd go to the next meeting, so I put you on the next meeting, I mean, I have communication with them.
Anything else, Wayne?
I do have something.
Yeah.
I had a team's meeting with, uh, nine one one association and division of the state radio fee is gonna be increased. The increase won't start until July twenty twenty five. Currently, it's a dollar thirty nine per line and their suggestion is it's gonna increase by twenty to twenty three cents. Because of technology's increase from twenty to forty percent, inflation fifteen four to sixteen nine percent. Wages depends upon what the legislature gives to the state radio. And then the nine one one, vesta nine one one calling solution is supposed to increase thirty seven to forty percent. Now, there's twenty three counties, twenty five counties that belong to this, but we're not the only ones that use it. High patrol also is operates out of the state radio, this is where all the calls go through. So they're trying to figure out some, uh, formula, try to get more costs out of the state high patrol and stuff, so.
So when you, what is a dollar thirty seven per line that that is?
Now we're getting charged, I mean, we charge it per line, dollar fifty. And then fifty cents for the sirens, state interop radio network. And that's gonna stay the same.
That's, that's every accounting Riggs County.
Every telephone.
Every telephone.
So what we, we We're talking about monthly.
Monthly.
Yeah, right now it's, well, if it's a dollar thirty nine and goes up twenty cents, it'd be a dollar fifty nine.
You know, that's your computer, that's, that's every, that's every line that goes into every house and every business in Riggs County.
Cell phone.
Yeah, it's everything.
Everything. So there's, there's no doll, I mean, do we have actual have a total dollar amount on that?
Oh, we, yeah, I monstered. A lot, hundred and thirty.
You know, it's
That was, I thought I saw.
Twelve thousand dollars every
Yeah.
Quarter, I think.
No, more than that, I thought, I thought we saw a figure one time, was it like a hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars a year, is what that generated.
Yeah, well, yeah, it would be in the budget, would show that.
I, that's just, I don't know if that's true, but anyway.
Anyway, it's just
Twenty cent increase is, is measurable, I mean, now we're talking we're talking fifteen percent increase, sixteen, twenty percent increase.
Some people
So we're talking, yeah, maybe thirty five.
I don't think some counties even got the one fifty approved, we went to the voters and they approved one fifty. That's right, we get Two dollars for the fifty. For coverage because they figured it's cheap to have, I mean, they wanna have, you gotta have a E M Ts and nine one one ambulances and stuff. Might have to look at the future of trying to get another increase from the public or pay it out of the
Can we do another vote on that this year, is it too late?
Taxes, well, it could be the fall.
It could, it could be, it could be on the general election.
General, yeah, it could be. So, but we'll get some better dumb numbers here, maybe in the next couple of weeks or something to figure out, we gotta have.
You, you knew, you knew when the legislation was put forward under those circumstances, that eventually it was gonna be abused, and the abuse started right from the very, right from the start. There's, there's, there's a funding source and we'll just keep tapping it and tapping it and tapping it.
It's too bad that the legislature wouldn't appropriate money in, be out of the legacy fund or something where there's
They always, they always want to push money off and let someone else pay for it, so I give, that leaves more money for them to do, build museums with.
Yeah, well, they didn't have enough, they weren't fully staffed, they said, now they're fully staffed, so it's taking more money.
Again, the legislation that allowed that was flawed.
I, not to interrupt, I spoke with the fair board crew and they apologized for the miscommunication and asked to be on the next meeting agenda. I said, no problem.
They were already on there.
Hey, I was gonna say too, I know it's a little off topic, but, uh, we're all too, especially now if we're fully staffing officers. You might be able to get that city deal to contract, but yeah, I know that's off topic.
But that's
That's it, Wayne?
That's all I have, I guess, uh, we did have a meeting about the flexible transportation. And I'll be getting more paperwork on that, it's coming up the next meeting, so.
Okay.
Next step of that.
The DocuSign agreements, for those who started coming up here last week, uh, Grant Forks County got theirs, so W seniors come on DocuSign pretty soon.
Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you.
Old courthouse, new courthouse.
I have not contacted one, that's my
That's fine.
That's my dropping the ball there, I will get away from this week before the next meeting.
Brian got some signs up.
Yep.
My first message, science, keep out.
Keep out. Future, future business.
So, so at the next meeting, you guys will talk about the fair board, um, budget.
Okay, Jamie, you on?
No, he had to jump off.
So I would like to be in contact with our representative, our senator and the Association of Counties about the sales ratio study. I think we want them all to attend by Zoom, we want to explain to, to the, all the, our, all the entities involved. That we have tried everything we can in order to move forward with the sales ratio study. That the representative, senator and Association of Counties all work for the same people we do, the taxpayers of Riggs County. There's no, there's no need to punish the taxpayers when the taxpayers are already paying all the wages for all those people. We've got a problem that we can't solve and though, everybody works for the taxpayers, they gotta get on board and help get this solved. They can't keep pointing fingers at us. That's their job, that's our job, that's their job, they haven't done anything but said, no, you gotta do this, or you gotta do this, or you gotta do this. We've been the ones that have been trying to get this done and all they wanna do is have us spend taxpayer dollars to do it, rather than do their job and step up. The tax, the, the tax department has people on staff there, they could do this within a matter of days. They just don't wanna do it, there needs to be political pressure put on them to do it. And that's what I intend to bring this out, so we can see that the people that are supposed to be working for the citizens aren't working for the citizens. So Sam, if you can send that out, we want a representative or those, or somebody from each one of those offices to attend the Zoom meeting. Dealing with the tax equalization, tech, dealing with the sales ratio study. And as you noticed, we don't use a sales ratio study, we just completed the tax equalization portion of the county. Did we use the tax, did we use the sales ratio study, or have we ever used the sales ratio study? The answer is no. It's something the state uses, why should we be paying thirty thousand dollars out of taxpayer dollars funds in order to fund something the state uses? Okay, any other future business?
Yeah, she was on, you guys weren't, you guys, you weren't on here the last time she spoke with us, Lorna did and
The last couple of years, couple of years, yeah. Or more, maybe more than that.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe more than that.
I'll visit with her and maybe if we need to have her beep on again and visit with us again about it.
Yep. Any other future business? It's getting about that time.
I'll make motion to adjourn.
Motion by Tranby to adjourn is our second.
I'll second that.
Second by Zorn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned, ten thirty nine. Next meeting, this room, June seventeenth.